Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Caldwell, Burleson County, Texas, will convene in a regular meeting at the City Hall, 107 Southfield Street, Caldwell, Texas. Regular meeting place thereof at 5:30 PM today, June 20th, 2023. Please stand for the indication and pledges. Ms. Juanita Tossin will be just going to play an invitation.
So Father, we come to call you at the seat of government here in Caldwell. And I'm asking, sir, that because of their authority and their dedication to you, that you will release the angels and break this heat dome that's over our area. And then we thank you for the wisdom that you're giving the council and the choices and decisions they make are a beautiful. We thank you that you're ordering the steps of the city into the direction that you have chosen for us in Jesus' name.
Amen. Pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you all for coming. Usually it's just a couple of staff members in the council here, so I'm excited to see citizens that are concerned about your community here today. We don't have any citizens to be heard on agenda items. And do we have any citizens on city-related topics? Mr. Morris? Not yet, okay. We'll go into the consent agenda items. And that considered consists of the approval of minutes, the approval of the MHMR, request for $3,500 dollars, and the approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Brazos Valley Council of Governments. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda items? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of passing and approving consent agenda items? Raise your hand. Motion passed. Next, we have a public hearing. Submission of a conditional use permit for a manufactured home application by Atkinson Properties LLC for property at 807 Plum Street, Unit 771, parcel ID number 1032127. We need discussion and possible action. And I understand we've got two that will be speaking at this time. They need candy.
I'm not sure what the realities are up here for this. Am I loud enough? Can everybody hear me? Everybody don't have to talk to you in ear. But I'm real concerned with this situation. I don't really know all of the specifics. If it's just a mobile home or two moving in, I don't have a problem with that. But if it's going to be a full-fledged, big-time mobile home park, I do have a problem with that because there's already noise issues in our area. I constantly have complaints about loud music. And we've had thefts in our home in the past, and I'm concerned with that. And also, I'm very concerned with what it will do to our value of our home. And I'm also concerned with how they're managed. Whether they're going to have, you know, the mobile homes are going to have skirting and be, you know, keep their yards full, you know, in good shape. Because it's something that needs to be addressed in other areas too. Because I know there's renters on that street and they've got hot messes out there in their yards. And it would be nice to see those kind of things taken care of as well. I know that's not on the agenda, but I just thought I'd voice it. But I don't want to see that happening with mobile homes either. I have nothing against mobile homes. I've lived in on myself. I've got a fact, one that I owned at one time is still in the trailer park because it's currently there now. And that guy has a hot mess out in his yard. So I just, you know, want it to be really considered. I'd really like to have more information on exactly what they're planning on doing.
Thank you. And Mr. Larry Nichols?
I wanted to speak on the next one.
Oh, the next one?
Quinn Waters, something.
Oh, that one, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
Mayor, do you want to do it?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes.
So the application for both of the CPs is for the same property. So a few months back, Mr. Icicant came in to meet with staff and we ended up replating this entire property. So it was the entire tract here and then including this that's called out. So he did the minor plat to make the property into three different pieces. So there's a lot here and then the large lot. And then this is the lot that's going to contain the mobile homes. So there's four, no, three mobile homes that are existing on the property. And so he'll be adding two more mobile homes to that property. So the ordinance states that it's a mobile home park when it's more than two manufactured homes on the property. And so he's complying with those standards as is. But adding the two new mobile homes requires the CUPs. So that's why those are being brought forward till today. As far as utilities go, there's enough capacity on those lines to handle two extra mobile homes. And then as far as the question of adding additional mobile homes to the property, this would be the only two that would be able to be added. The property from here on out, it basically is too small to hold anymore. And then...
What about the big lot?
The big lot is a separate one, so there's no mobile homes on that property. So that would have to come as a different request if they wanted to add that. So the, I guess, is there any questions from the council?
And they'll have to abide by the guidelines for permits and whatnot because we recently had an incident with them moving one out on a Sunday with no permit, trying to go across my yard, tearing my yard up. And so I'm concerned with those type of issues as well.
Yes, and so the two new ones, they will be permitted. They will have to go through building permits and inspections.
And get skirted and that other one can be cleaned up?
Can I ask a question? I didn't say anything. But what does the ordinance say on mobile homes on that street?
As far as what exactly?
That no mobile homes are supposed to be located on Plum Street.
So that's why the CUP process is in place? So that anybody that would like to request a mobile home outside of the mobile home zones that were established by the council in 2006, they can do so. And so that's why the applicant is coming forward tonight to request this?
So the ordinance doesn't make any difference. I could put a mobile home in the net?
No, you have to go through that process. And then the council has to give a vote.
Okay. Because at one time, we were going to move a mobile home.
And at one time, I owned one that I wanted to put in that lot and I couldn't get it put in.
True, me too. And we were told no. So I'd like to know what sections account that you can do this in, which point? Why have the ordinance, if, going to do it? I just assume the ordinance not even have a speed on it yet.
I can take your information after the meeting and I can send you that map.
And these will be new mobile homes, not ancient ones like what are already there?
So to comply with the ordinance, they have to be five years of newer. And the ones that applicant has submitted to us comply with that.
We're in the park. We're in the park, but like over located.
So there's a drawing right here. So the existing ones are these two and then this larger one. So this is going to be the first one that we're talking about right now. And then the next one is this one.
Just, this is my property.
Okay.
Those are the only five I'm planning. And it kind of gives you an idea of the property. It had, I know at one point it was called Gold Mobile Home Park. I know as far back as mid-'90s, it existed. The infrastructure's there. And you can see where the water meters and everything. And that's kind of why I do five woodwork. And I do understand your concerns. I've already talked, currently, the very top one, I've evicted the lady who lived there. I have to go through this waiting process to get rid of that trailer. So that trailer's going to go. Spoiler alert, I might do another one later. That's the closest to the fence, that's the green.
Two, that would be the back. Toward some south.
The brick house down there, not the old.
Right, right, yeah. It's the farthest one, like right against the fence. That one will go away. The other two, the one next to it, I've already talked to him. And yes, his trailer is a mess. I've already told him, as far as the vehicles, we've worked out something to move those. I've told him that it's going to be a three-car minimum for mobile homes. He does need to clean it up. The other lady, she's got some plans, but nothing, nothing major. They're both older, fixed income. So it's hard to, you know, try not to put too much.
But the people that own the homes are going to be living in it, it's not going to be...
I am actually, those are the only two that I'm going to have left. From now on, I'm going to home them.
Okay.
That way, they're my responsibility. I can make sure. I've talked to, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Brazos Home Center in Bryan. They sell new homes. I've talked to the lady several times. I've already, and that's actually where I got the pictures for the ones we're looking to put out there. It's either going to be like a wood siding or vinyl siding, newer homes. I do not want anything old. I'm not going on Facebook Marketplace trying to find something cheap. It's going to be new homes or, you know, within a couple of years. I want to, my goal for that area is, it was my father's, he passed away. I inherited it. At his age, he was struggling to take care of it. I want to get the homes in there. And then I plan to put anything I make back into it for several years. Get it where it needs to be and then go from there.
I'm fine with all of that. Yeah. As long as we don't have any issues, we're having all the things around here. In parts. Okay, any more public, councilman comments?
Did you say, Forrest, in 2006 is when this was?
Mobile home ordinance?
Yes. Were there mobile homes there? Because y'all just said in the early '90s, how did this get put into?
From my understanding, when the ordinance did, so we have to correct me on this. From what I understand, they had to apply for it. Is that correct? Or was it just a city? They were, well, I mean...
They were grandfathered.
Yeah, they were grandfathered in, but they never actually were allowed.
I was trying to figure out how this evolved in the '90s and then all of a sudden it's still...
Well, even after that ordinance went into place, people that own property on the other side of the street ended up bringing in mobile homes. How that happened, I don't know. Just all of a sudden they were there.
Well, we protested that one too, but it was already set up. And we couldn't do anything like that. So I mean, they're coming in and I, I don't know. I just don't understand the ordinance.
The two on the end?
They were ready to...
They were allowing these permits that were...
Yes.
They did go through this process.
Any other questions from councilman? Do we have a motion to approve the conditional use permit for a manufactured home application for 807 Plum Street, Unit 771? Parcel ID number 1032127. Is there a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Next, submission of a conditional use permit for a manufactured home, 807 Plum Street, Unit 795, parcel ID 103127. Same thing?
Same thing, that other...
It's just another, just the other lot.
Two mobiles.
That's how we're like getting these mobile homes in there. We have a big problem when they put one there.
Yes, and that one, that one, I had actually, again, as people are moving out, I planned for the older ones to move out. I have zero intention. I've already told the people that live there, if you ever move, you either have to sell me this trailer or you have to move it. Because I'm not keeping these. Like I said, I don't want to force them out because they're older.
It's just the street is so narrow.
The gentleman who I sold it to, I sold it to a gentleman. It was his responsibility to move it out. As far as I knew, he was getting all the permits. Everything I was told, he got the permits. Yeah, I mean...
It was a comical situation that day.
But I can assure you, the company I'm using, the Brazos Home Center, they do this. They've told me that they have delivered to Caldwell. They do this, they move their own homes. Everything would go through them. You know, I mean, they're professional. I've talked to one of their main salesmen up there, or sales ladies, I'm sorry. She's very knowledgeable, you know, 100% confident. All the reviews I've seen, homeowner and people like that, that issue.
Any additional discussion on this unit, nothing? Do we have a motion to approve the conditional use permit for a manufactured home at 807 Plum Street, Unit 795, parcel ID number 103127? Do we have a second? All in favor of approving the conditional use permit? Raise your hand. Motion passes. Next, submission of a final plat for Quinn Waters' subdivision, Phase One of a 113 single-family residential subdivision of approximately 54.431 acres, parcel ID number 10648. And I understand we have a citizen, Larry Nichols?
I own several acres, but the property, apart from half you guys have sent me. And as my understanding, the sewer line is down there. And I have the city loop of power line that goes through my property. And the last time somebody accessed my property to replace the power pole, a 90-foot power pole, it created terrible ruts, knocked a tree or two down and left me a mess, in which case, they did come back and fix it after I insisted that my attorney might be chatting with them. So they did come back and fix it. But I guess my question is, are they going to access the sewer line at multiple occasions, multiple places on my property? Which is fine, it's a each man. But I mean, though, you put a fence around it, several thousand dollars. And are they going to access my property to, it's leased to Bruce Offerd. He's got cows on it from time to time. And so are they going to access my property at multiple places? Are they going to be compensated for that? Are they going to access it for either power and/or sewer? And, you know, it's okay, I'm not trying to be antagonistic toward the project. Sounds neat to me. But if they mess up my property and want it fixed, then I'd kind of like to be compensated if they're going to tear it, if they're going to get on and off at multiple places.
I was told that, can anybody speak on this?
Yes, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So I have several questions, I might as well. So Betty Gold, we have a family land in front of Highway 21, from north to south, east to west. Probably the largest portion on your back. And I assume are you with, yeah? No, but I believe everyone's with me. But last time when we had a meeting, it was set up to approve for like 500 houses on the 120 acres.
Is there a map to show us what we're talking about?
And so today, you're talking about 54.431 acres. So I'm a little confused on what was presented last time to now.
This is just phase one. The last time was an entire, vast...
Okay, okay. So, and last time was 500 houses on 120 acres. And now you're proposing 113 acres on 54.431 acres. So where are the other 387 houses going to go? Or are there going to be that many houses? Or have y'all changed your plan on that?
The plan is unchanged. This is just phase one of multiple phases. It'll be developed in phases, it's not all in one.
So still 500 houses on 120 acres?
Yes.
So then this 113 on 54 acres would seem to have a lot more lot size.
So the overall plan incorporates the common area of floodplain, which like lower that overall density. So by the time the entire property is developed, it will still match that originally submitted plan. But this is just phase one, which is on the, against the southern...
Yes. And then timeframe on this phase one, as far as when do you propose that you're going to be putting in infrastructure? And when is the proposal of the homes to start being built?
The infrastructure will start, we have to wait for this meeting to get approval on construction plans. Construction plans have been through the city and their city engineers will give approval of those. The contractors bid out, I mean, the developer has bid out. I'm the engineer, sorry, I'm project. The developer has bid out the project and has contractor kind of on standby. It's ready to start as soon as they can get going. And then it'll take several months to build the road, borrow on sewer lines, all the infrastructure then once that's approved, that home construction will begin. Possibly later this year.
Okay, or early next year?
Yes.
And then, so as Mr. Nichols was saying, sewage, water, is that all coming from the Woodson side on the east side of your strip? And then are y'all going to be all going in down 105 on the west side and to the back by what used to be the Zia back there?
So the sewer, there's an existing lift station in the adjacent neighborhood that will be taking off by, it will be extending a gravity sewer line to that lift station. Building a new lift station on the site that will come to the other side of the airport that will dump into a gravity line over there through existing state property.
So the existing lift station, that's what's taking care of the Woodson addition? Kind of toward the airport? And then so this next lift station he's going to be doing is going to be near that? So it's all on the east side of the rectangle?
If you know where the pond is on this property, it's, I don't know, the northern end of the pond is where the new lift station will be located.
And then timeframe, inflow, outflow? I know we talked about that last time when y'all approved the plat for everything concerning, you know, 500 homes, starting out with 113. You're talking 200, 400 people driving in and out of there every day. Do we wait for wrecking accidents to happen before the state's going to put a light up there? Or how is that traffic going to be flowed in and out of there once these houses are done?
So we do not have a connection to the text on it, which would be a hard to be warned. I know the developer, y'all might know more about the counties responsible for it. What must have been discussed there. But I know that some improvements discussed on the county road. But can they help him out in that multi-type?
We haven't discussed that, but potentially your question. No, I think we're going to have to monitor that very closely and work...
Like they always do.
And work closely with the state and try to get ahead of that.
Yeah, people fly up over the hill at 80 miles an hour and that's right there. And it's pretty dangerous.
But as far as the exit on the Howard 21, we're going to try to stay ahead of the curve. They work with the state.
And then the county road needing to be much improved for that much kind of traffic?
We've had discussion with the county and a couple of other parties.
And then water runoff. I talked to Forrest about this too. Again, we have the whole, basically the south side of the rectangle. Well, it's fair north side, it's our south side. What our concern is that already, when it rains, it's always, everything's moving right down there and that going. So the whole area across there. How or where are your plans? Are we going to go through that again on a second track? As to how you're going to work that area down there on our back line?
So the existing pond is being converted into an extension pond. So there's a state law that new development cannot damage downstream water. So the way that's interpreted is typically that the existing heat flow from the site cannot be exceeded with the post-developed. So the extension ponds are built to hold that back. So we're putting a concrete structure in that existing pond to meter the water coming off the site. So we will be discharging water from the streets into the pond. It'll hold the water back at a rate that is equal to today's. But there is a federal floodplain along that creek, so that is a major creek. So we just want that water to remain.
And then, so there's like, are there like three tanks on there? Notice I built that one and then we have the one further back and then we have the...
What you sort of do is...
Yeah, which pond are you talking about?
The biggest one.
Where he put water into it anyway?
The one that's...
Yes.
Well, we just considered about the north side of y'all's property. The north side of property, you know, probably 21. Hope that's coming down here with that. Well, I just want to know how you're going to get it. But I don't know, Arlen, if you can build it.
And that is one of the last reasons that we're kind of starting south or north. And honestly, we haven't, we haven't announced anything or anything up there yet. We will, we will have to comply with the state ordinances and state... We will, we will have to comply with state ordinances and state law and federal regulations on that floodplain. So we'll, um, we'll probably contact, you know, the, the, the partners to help with it. We are, um, going to have to add some sort of drainage of water through that area. It's a, 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 I think that's four, five things as well.
I'm sure it is, but I just wanted to get that foot to the door.
And it'll be on y'all's property going through there. Mr. Nichols?
Water does. Our own creek down there and it, it comes flowing through. And the guy that cleared the fence line, dumped the, he made his burn pile right there in the middle of the creek. So that's not a good thing. So it needs to flow better if y'all are going to throw a whole water on. That, I mean, it, it, the water's going to be flowing a little better at least. I mean, I know it's going to happen, it's happened before, but anyway, that's just a...
Yeah, if there's any tail, there's... Get, get my water out of this.
Internet is not working.
Okay. And that'd be something different, will have a domino effect for police control, more kids in school, more teachers. It's just going to be a domino effect. And are these houses also going to be sitting on top of each other? Or are they going to have plenty of space between them?
These houses are bigger, 60 foot.
So there's, for this first phase, there's 55-foot lots and there's 73 of those. 65-foot lots and 29 of those and 75-foot lots, there's 10 of them.
Yeah, but how big of a house is going to be on 60 grounds this lot?
So the, this is the developer and they'll be selling the lots to home builders. So as far as the home size, I can't...
Is this low-lower income household?
Yeah, no.
How many feet does it require in each house?
So each, uh, setback requirement is, uh, seven and a half feet on each side.
Variance is 10 feet 10.
So they're requesting a variance of the ordinance?
Yeah, okay, there we go. Let's go and have an ordinance, you're not going to follow it.
Do you mean, go through, anything else?
Is there any more, uh, public comment about the, uh, plat? Will y'all have more, um, meetings on this variance? Or is that already going to prove?
So can we go through with the, uh, plat approval?
So what steps have to be taken to make the ordinance stay in place?
I don't have a question. Um... Well, I'm, I'm not sure what the concern is about a home being so close to each other. They're, they're, they're like that in the new, in the new subdivision at Arrowhead as well. You know, those are smaller homes and they're very close together. And that is, um... Affordable housing, which for, um, a medium-income family, a middle-class American, um, they can't afford the sprawling acreage and, you know? And so I think, uh, Quinn Waters is trying to provide affordable housing for citizens of Caldwell and it just requires them sitting on smaller pieces of property. Now, um, also know, if you could see the whole plat, there's sections of this subdivision where very large homes, space in between can go. It's, it's, like you say, it's phases. It's, your smaller homes are going to be, and then you've got moderately sized homes. And then I think I was in on the original, one of the first meetings with this particular developer. I mean, some of these homes are a million dollars. I mean, they're going to be like estate homes back there. And so, is that correct?
Yeah, so the ones that back up to the, are very expensive houses.
So it's not just, you know, all of these 500 tiny homes set on this property? Some are going to be million-dollar homes, so...
If I could afford a million-dollar home, I certainly wouldn't want to have 47 and a half feet.
Well, those particular lots, those particular lots will not, even, even the middle range, the 65-foot frontage, um, they're asking for that, but it depends, I guess, on the builder or the, the house plan that someone chooses. You know, you may have some long, narrow home with more space on each side. So they're not, I don't, I think this particular subdivision is, um, exactly like Arrowhead where all of these homes look very similar. I think this is, um, quite a bit different. More customized homes.
I know, just like even the Country Club area, they had to have their home plans approved...
Right.
Before they could build.
Right.
And those, those homes are not stacked on top of each other. And I'm sure there's several million-dollar homes over there.
But also, again, that was sold, uh, the lot sizes were much larger. What is that, 40-year-old subdivision?
True.
So...
Not too...
A, and a lot cheaper, exactly, yes.
Listen to the staff report on it and then maybe that will answer some of my questions or if you have some more.
Uh, we can.
Okay. Um, so this item is regarding a subdivision of a final plat for a single-family residential subdivision on approximately 4.431 acres located on County Road 105 West of the Woodson Edition. The subdivision will contain 112 single-family residential lots. Development will keep the large pond existing on the property, which will be used for retention and extension and added amenity and open space to serve the residents of the city. Access to the development will be off of County Road 105 with two main points of entry. County Road 105 will be improved as part of the project and the city will maintain the road on completion of the development. The lift station behind the hospital will be replaced by a new lift station that will serve the existing load of the Woodson addition and the proposed development. The developer and the city will be working together to make this improvement and the lift station, um, will be accessed at the end of the new proposed road coming in off of 105. Um, Nove Side Road is what that road is called. It'll be stubbed out to provide future access, um, for road extension back to Paul Street. Um, in the event of any of the properties to the south of the Woodson addition, um, would be developed.